Yes, yes, sir.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. It is five o'clock, it's time to get our afternoon meeting July the seventh meeting tied. It's time to call a sheriff order, go to, we're gonna do Island Two first unless there's an objection. Island Two, super street design for Highway 74.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. This is, by the way, a brief introduction. Sean Epperson, Division Traffic Engineer for NC DOT is prepared to present the two options for the proposed super street design of Rocky River Road and at Highway 74. And they'd like to hear, NC DOT would like to hear from council if there's a preference towards one option or the other. And from what I understand, the two basic options are traditional super street and Michigan left design. In subsequent to hearing from NC DOT, I've asked Chris Plata to share with you the staff perspective on economic development perspective, the merits of the Michigan left option or the traditional super street. Would that like to introduce Mr. Epperson, unless Jimmy Harrison's initial commentary on the matter?
Sir. Welcome, everybody. Thank you for having us here today. So, we heard talk about the US 74 and Rocky River, a super street project. I'm gonna start by giving a brief overview of super streets in general. It's relatively brief. If you have any questions, just let me know, I'll answer them as we go along. Sir?
Is this Mouse? Bruce?
Okay, so, a super street. A super street is a type of intersection in which movements from the main intersection are eliminated. These movements are, excuse me, she wrote more about, these movements are redirected to U-turn points built just west or east, well, in this case, west or east of the main intersection. There's two types of super, two main types of super streets, and there's two that are being considered for this intersection. The first is a standard super street, and a standard super street, the left turns are still allowed off of the main line, in this case, 74, onto Rocky River. However, all the movements on Rocky River are redirected to turn right on the 74, and if they were wanting to go straight or turn left, they would go down to the U-turn point. So, they go down to U-turn point and make a U-turn, go back to the main intersection. If they were wanting to turn left to begin with, they would just continue on straight. If they were wanting to go through the intersection, they would make a right. The Michigan left super street eliminates all left turn movements from the intersection. So, no lefts are allowed off of 74 or off of Rocky River. So, if you're wanting to turn left off of 74 on the Rocky River, you would continue past the intersection to the U-turn point, make a U-turn, come back, and then turn right on the Rocky River. If you're wanting to turn left off of Rocky River, you would turn right on the 74, go down to the U-turn point, make a U-turn, continue on that. In this case, though, if you're wanting to go straight across the intersection on Rocky River, you would be able to do so. So, why super streets? They improve safety, they reduce travel time, and they're economically beneficial.
I get the first two, I'm curious. I'd third one.
Okay, economically beneficial?
Right.
Okay, so, by improving travel time and reducing congestion, they help people get through the area, because more people are likely to come to the area. In addition, the super street improves capacity to a point where you may not need something much larger, like a full-blown interchange or a six, eight-lane divided roadway. In many cases, you can get as much capacity out of a four-lane super street as you would have a six- or eight-lane standard full movement intersection. So, they tend to take a lot less right away and have a lot less impacts on the surrounding businesses or homes.
How far do you return from Rocky River?
Typically, we go between 600 to 1,000 foot. Both of these are right around 800 currently in the concept. So, they may change a little bit in the design, but it's about 800 foot.
That's a design and not a current crossover. That would be one of the current crossovers, right?
Correct.
Going back around, it's a new one.
We've been creating ones, yes.
So, we're gonna make a lot more friends with them. At some point, we're gonna make a lot of friends in the coming future because we've got a lot of these coming.
We have a lot coming.
Out of all.
I think with the reduced congestion on 74, a lot of people are gonna be happy. So, you reduce the likelihood of crashes. In a standard full movement intersection, you have 32 conflict points. So, there's 32 potential movements that would result in a crash. In a standard super street, there's 14, and that's between the main intersection and each of the U-turn bulbs. In the Michigan left super street, there's 20 conflict points. So, either one's a reduction. And most of the conflict points that have been reduced are your angle-type crashes. So, even the ones that are remaining tend to be your less severe-type crashes, rear end crashes, side swipes. I mean, obviously, no crash is good, but those tend to be a lot less severe than your angle-type crashes. Fewer threats to crossing pedestrians. If you have sidewalk and crosswalks out there, pedestrians are able to cross one lane, one direction of travel at a time, they'll stage in the middle of the road, and they can cross the other direction of travel and getting across 74. So, instead of having to cross 100-foot pavement, they're crossing, you know, 36-foot pavement, refuge area, and then crossing again.
And just a definition on that conflict point. It's a little hard for me to understand how there's less on that standard than there is on the Michigan left, when in fact, it looks like there were less opportunities to make turns. How could that be more conflict?
Okay, so, on the Michigan left, because the side streets are allowed to go straight across the intersection, you still have the potential for angle crashes. I mean, if somebody would have to run a red light.
Okay, I'm sorry, I must have missed out. On the Michigan left, straight across?
Yeah, Michigan left, the rocky, the side street, in this case, Rocky River, is still allowed to go straight across 74. So, there's still the potential for an eastbound or westbound vehicle on 74 to hit that vehicle. Obviously, somebody would have to run a red light, but the potential is still there.
Well, that's there now.
Correct.
Yeah.
And then, most of your conflict points at a standard intersection would actually be eliminated if nobody ever ran a red light. But unfortunately, that's not the case.
Right.
Okay. Studies have shown, I've got some statistics, between 28 and 49 percent reduction in overall crash rates and as much as a 70 percent reduction in injured crash rates for the standard super street. For the Michigan left, you've got about a 70 percent reduction in severe crashes, the fatal crashes reduced by about 31 percent. So, different numbers, but they're very similar between the two. Either way, you've got significantly less crashes. Okay, so, all the super streets provide reduced travel time. The main reason is you've got phase reductions. So, what we have out there on Rocky River and 74 is a six-phase signal. With either option, you end up with two-phase signals. The fewer phases you have, the less red and yellow clearance times you have, which is lost time. And the fewer phases you have, the more time you can give to the remaining phases. So, even with, so, like, even if you're wanting to turn left off of Rocky River, because neither option, that won't be allowed, the turning right and going down and making the U-turn and coming back tends to happen quicker because of the quicker phases. See, it cycles through each phase much quicker and the shorter cycle length. So, like, right now, we're running out there between 180 and 220 second cycle length. So, if you get there, just beginning of your red, you could be waiting two to three minutes before you get a green. With the super street options, we're typically gonna be looking at cycle lengths of maybe 100 and 150. So, you'll wait a lot less time to get back to your green.
Even on Rocky River?
Even on Rocky River.
Only place that ever caused the problems is obviously peak time mostly.
If Rocky River were redesigned in any way along the super street thing, I'm talking about most protected to the, well, between Old Charlotte Road and 74.
No, that, the, right now, Rocky River comes into 74 at a slight skew, that's still gonna happen. In both options, there'll be, right now, in both options, there'll be dual-lane approaches on Rocky River to 74, but that's just adding lanes.
Yeah, well, yeah, well, that'll take care of traffic. I know now it's backed up a lot.
Yeah, dual lanes will take care of that traffic.
Correct. So, both, on both, of both options, you'll have dual-lane approaches to the intersection. The configuration's different depending on which option is chosen, but there'll be dual lanes on each one.
Dual-lane. I don't mean to get technical about this, but I'm trying to, I'm ignorant, and I don't know. Under the super street, where you cannot get across, Rocky River will be?
There'll be two right turn lanes.
Two right turn lanes.
And then, the Michigan left option, there'll be a through lane and a right turn lane.
Yes, yeah. All right. I'm kidding. I'm not an engineer, but I can use.
Okay, so, economically beneficial, you know, preserves the existing facility, you're not widening as much as you would be in, or going for, you know, an eight-lane facility. It's only that you're definitely not widening as much as you would for a full-blown interchange. So, it's, you know, it's a lot less expensive than a full-blown interchange, and it still provides good access to both sides of the streets.
I get everything so far. I'm just curious which one you're pitching for.
Well, you'll see towards the end, but we're really not, honestly. They both have, they both have pros and cons, and we're honestly here just to present those pros and cons here. There's not a clear-cut winner in this case, in our opinion.
Chris, I suppose, will be one.
Okay, so, on to the intersection itself. So, in the super street concept, the southbound approach would be dual right turn lanes, one will be continuous, and the other will be a right turn lane of 500 foot. The northbound approach, again, dual right turn lanes, one continuous, one with 500 foot of storage. Your eastbound and westbound approach will have left turn lanes from the main line, and then your U-turn bulbs will actually be dual lanes. Each U-turn point will have two U-turn lanes and will be signalized. You probably see that better on the map.
Yeah, that's actually confusing.
Got any questions on it?
Is that Jane Hamilton?
Well, yeah, east and westbound on 74, there's still gonna be two through lanes, and will that be just one packing lane going left?
Correct. There'll still be only single left turn lanes on the main line.
Only a single left turn?
Yes.
And, you know, I'm sure the people know this much better than I do, I'm not picking either one, but I'm just asking, but, you know, during peak traffic time, now, that's a, that left turn, especially going west from 74 and left on Rocky River is gonna, that backs up, you know?
Where's James Hamilton?
That's to the right.
Right. Is that gonna alleviate any of that congestion right in there?
I'm not familiar with, is that the one that?
On the north side?
On the north side? Okay, on Rocky, intersection with Rocky River?
Yeah.
The queue, okay, so, I'm guessing the queue on Rocky, I know the queue on Rocky River is really bad, I'm guessing it blocks the intersection today? It should be reduced. I don't know how far Jane Hamilton is from the intersection.
Not far.
Not far. You can't get out of that street, that's why I was.
Jane Hamilton is that first great to the right set there.
Right here?
Right there.
Okay.
Yeah. That's gonna be an issue regardless.
What, can I interject?
Sure.
What if we curved it and brought it in line with the street that goes off to the left behind the, up here truck stop there? Would that be a big benefit?
I don't, I don't know, but, you know, if you're, Jane Hamilton does have residential, and a great deal of that residential does come out that way, and one of those left to get on 74 will cross. Now, what we're talking about is now, that left turn during peak traffic times is a real issue because of the backup, you know, towards Secret Shortcuts. Now, would that help if it came up there to that other street? Now, I know we'd be talking about, I don't live on that street, but we have someone here who does, you might can answer that question better than I could.
I can't tell the exact distance for Jane Hamilton, but I can tell you, under both options, based on what I think that distance is, the queue's still gonna block that intersection under both options.
Yeah, you're probably right.
I'd have to go, I'd have to go back and look at the numbers, and I've got it on my computer over there, but the next road up may be far enough away, but at least under one of the options, maybe both, it wouldn't queue up there. I'd have to, you know, figure that distance and go back and look.
That's a bad street getting out on Rocky River regardless of what peak time is. You know, the time you can get out, maybe it's 3:00 o'clock in the morning, other than that, you can't get out.
Yeah.
And people are having to go up the other way and try to even get on 74 because they can't get out there. So, I'm looking just for something to alleviate that traffic or to do to make it a little bit better.
You know, I would say the further we can get it from 74, the better chance we have of that queue with either option not blocking.
I could tell you that that Michigan left, that ain't gonna have you either. But I, I'm not speaking, but, you know, the other one's gonna eliminate traffic across the street, that, that might help a little bit, I don't know. But I, I'm gonna defer to whoever else is bringing up these options frankly.
A couple of things to keep in mind, I don't know if y'all noticed, but as Sean mentioned, the main intersection and both the U-turn intersections are signalized. There are signals, we plan signals at all three locations. There is just a single left turn on each direction of 74, and one of the reasons that works so well is the reduced phasing that Sean was talking about, because you don't have to wait for all those protected left turn movements throughout the intersection. The intersection works much simpler and much more efficiently.
Because the shorter cycle length, you can serve that phase more often and you get up to 15, so it doesn't queue on.
So, when we evaluate the intersection, Sean's gonna show you some data here. We basically take the growth rates that are in place today, the historical growth rates, and we project traffic out to 2040. Okay, so, we're looking out 25 years, so that what we build today will be good for a number of years in the future, and will not be obsolete the day we finish building it.
Unless you do something with that Jane Hamilton road, it'd be obsolete when you leave.
And like I said, when I said, when I said, "Under both options, I feel confident Jane Hamilton is still gonna be blocked," that was based on 2040 numbers. We can go run 2015 numbers and see, because it may not be blocked initially with either option. I, I just don't, we didn't, we only ran it for 2040, so it's the only data I've got currently available right now. But I feel confident, under both options, in 2040, Jane Hamilton is still gonna be blocked.
Well, let's keep in mind, you know, a lot of people, as you look out for 2040, you know, we may have a bypass by then, but everybody hopes, might take a little of that traffic or stress off of this, but that would remain to be seen, and it would be anybody's guess as to whether it would affect this or not. But I'm not trying to interfere with the presentation now, I ask all these questions, but, and I believe, I listen to anybody, I'm listening, so.
Did you say it would be a traffic signal at Jane Hamilton?
No.
Okay, I didn't think you did, I wasn't sure what you said.
He said three traffic signals. Do you mean, you don't mean those turnarounds would be a traffic signal?
Yes, they will be signalized.
Those turnarounds?
Yes.
There'd be three lights, I turned around.
I tell you, it works really well in Michigan, because I grew up in the Detroit area a lot, and at first, I thought, man, this is crazy. But you swing, you go, you get in that turn lane, light changes, you go, it works well.
Because there's, because they're all two-phase signals, they're relatively easy to coordinate together, so you can keep traffic on 74 moving through all of them without stopping at each individual one.
If those lights don't get re-spectrumed out right, then when you stop down here to let this guy come out for his left turn, you're gonna be stopping at a little 500 feet up the road at that other big intersection.
800.
Huh?
800.
Well, 800, I would, 800, 500.
Well, so, if you're traveling east on 74 and you stop here.
Yeah, sadly, it can't touch that.
Yeah. So, if you're traveling east on 74 and you stop here, you'll never stop here. This, this, this signal will never stop eastbound traffic, and this signal will never stop westbound traffic.
Okay. Out of curiosity, is Michigan the only state America uses?
No, they were, they were just the first.
You said the eastbound and westbound. Eastbound, westbound, they were stopped with traffic light?
Okay, so, so, westbound will stop at this U-turn bulb, but it won't stop at this one. Eastbound will stop at this one, but never this one.
How about to buy an intersection there?
Main intersection can stop both directions.
Well, I suppose, I suppose, while I go, you'll be stopping, I mean, very well, you'll be stopping 800 feet apart.
Well, because these are simple two-phase signals, we can progress traffic where if you stop here, we can set it up to where you're gonna get a green when you get to this intersection.
Yeah, I've done that in Birmingham, Michigan, a thousand times, take a right, turn, go down, and then take a left there and back. Yep, it works really good.
Well, I'll give you guys credit now, you definitely moving that traffic better on 74 east and west. So, as a dumb councilman, I'm not gonna try to tell you what to do with these lights, I'm just asking questions that I think a lot of other people might ask, but, and you're trying to have an answer for.
And the good thing with this is, like I said, well, this is because you can go to a short, right, right now, we're, we're using these longer cycle lengths, and we've got to move a large, longer traffic on 74. By going to these fewer phase signals, we can use a shorter cycle length, move the same amount of traffic, but the side streets will get served more often. Because that's, right now, our biggest complaints on 74, it used to be we got more of our complaints about 74 traffic. Nowadays, we get more of our complaints about side street traffic on 74, and we, there's no way for us to serve 40,000, 50,000 cars that are on 74 today without hurting the side streets. But these shorter cycle lengths, I'm not saying the side streets are gonna be perfect, but they're gonna get served much more often, so it'll be a lot better on.
As good as this, I'm not so sure that that won't hurt that Jane Hamilton road even worse than what it is now. I don't know that, that's my thinking. And if that's the case, it's already bad. You know, I hope that, I hope you look at that Jane Hamilton road, see if there's anything you can do for that traffic, try to get in and out there.
Yeah, like I said, and I go back and look at the queues and see which one, and see how far, I've got the data, I just don't have it.
Well, I think that, as bad as it is, Mike, I think it will even be worse with it.
Well, the queues on Rocky River are gonna be reduced significantly.
Okay.
Because the traffic's served more often.
Yeah.
The backup on the U-turn approach on Rocky River won't be as bad. Will it be not bad enough to block Jane Hamilton? I don't know off the top of my head, but I can.
I don't know either, I'm just saying, I hope you look at it anyway.
And I've got, I've got the, I've got the queuing data for 2040, and I can tell you, you know, in 2040, it's still gonna block Jane Hamilton. I can do that once I get back to my computer.
Yeah.
But, yeah, better question is, you know, so, if it's gonna block it in 2040, something may be needed, but it's not gonna block it in 2015, 2020, 2025, 2030. You need to do something today or five, 10 years from now. That's a different question, I can't necessarily answer, but it's information we can look at.
We could always block all Jane Hamilton up there and make a one-way out onto the Secret Shortcuts.
That's just one idea.
I thought everyone was like.
I think it's closing, but I'm all over round.
That's right, that's right. Okay, so, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to.
No, you're fine. I mean, are there any more questions on either concept and what the designs are gonna look like? Okay, so, our level service delay comparisons, like we mentioned, these are based on 2040, 2040 numbers. So, LOS is level of service, and that's a ranking between A and F, A obviously being good, B being failing. Delay is measured in seconds per vehicle, and it's an average, so, you know, some cars will see less, some will see more. And just keep in mind, it's per vehicle, so, if you've got 10 seconds of delay on 74, and you've got 50,000 cars a day, you get a lot more overall delay versus 10 seconds of delay on Rocky River where you've only got, in 2040, you can predict it, how about 13, 14?
Question. The bypass, how many, how much difference you think Highway 74, how much traffic will the bypass take off Highway 74?
Scott, do you know that number?
Estimates range anywhere from 20 to 30 to, excuse me, 42 percent initially.
So, that would bring it down probably 15 to about 35, somewhere over there.
Okay, so, here's the level service and delay numbers for the main intersection. I'm not gonna completely bore you with them. The main things I want to point out is the main differences between the standard super street and the Michigan left super street is the eastbound and westbound approach of 74 see about 7 to 11 second difference in average delay in the Michigan left super street, please, see about 7, 11 seconds more. Now, the U-turn bulbs are a little different. The main difference there, for the east U-turn bulb, the delay for 74 is about the same. For the west U-turn bulb, 74 actually sees about a 10-second, 12-second more average delay in the standard super street versus the Michigan left. So, this is what I was saying earlier, in the grand scheme of things, the level service delay between the two options is relatively the same. And I forgot to mention a couple of things when we were looking at this, went back up. So, the standard super street concept, because of the median there, eastbound and westbound 74 are operated with a different, different controller. And not to bore you with that, but basically, that means we can progress, treat 74 as one-way street. We can progress 74 eastbound separately from 74 westbound. That doesn't mean a whole lot, but allows, in the end, means we can move more traffic on 74 easily. So, there's a plus for that one. Negative, I know there, I know there are folks who are wanting to get traffic, you know, especially tractor-trailers across 74, as they would have to go around and make the U-turn and come back. So, the Michigan left super street, main intersection's operated under one controller, makes it a little tougher to progress traffic, still a two-phase signal, we can still do it, it's a little tougher. You will have that straight-through movement for, for your tractor-trailer, for any vehicle, but, you know, specifically a tractor-trailer going from the airport to the bypass. One of the negatives for this option, and we've got a better design here than what we've got existing up in Concord, the Cabarrus or Pocatank, the right road intersection is a Michigan left intersection, and it's very wide open. We've got this one very tight. But up in Concord, people are making lefts, and you're not supposed to make a left, but there's nothing physically stopping you, because there's no median barrier. With this concept design, we've tightened up the intersection. Because of that skew of Rocky River, the left from 74 to Rocky River is gonna be virtually impossible. Unfortunately, that same skew makes the left from Rocky River to 74 very easy. We'll put up signs, there'll be arrows, there'll be all kinds of stuff, but it's gonna be an issue, hopefully not, but potentially an issue for people making that left. So, in a brief summary, overall level service and delay differences are very minimal between the two options. You're gonna see improved congestion, or reduced congestion on Rocky River and 74 with either option. The standard super street will allow for shorter cycle lengths and greater progression for traffic on 74 than the Michigan left. It's gonna be better, the standard super street's a little better. The Michigan left super street will require a slightly longer cycle length, with good progression on 74 not as easily achieved. Standard super street will require all traffic to turn on the US 74, even those wanting to go straight. The Michigan left super street will require, only require those turning on to US 74 to turn at the intersection. The enforcement of turn restrictions in the Michigan left will be a little tougher than the standard super street. So, that was just a brief summary. If you've got any questions, let me know.
Well, the first thing I'm gonna say is, I'm gonna testify, I've been on the council 90 days after this thing's opened, and everybody's complaining about any, either one of these changes. And I did, right there at the end, we did address on the Michigan turn left, that, you know, the street is designed just across 74, but it would not be impossible to make a left turn.
No.
And some people will try to do that, and they might be given the first time because they just don't know. The 10th time is because they wanna make a left turn, and they don't wanna use this, go down, make the U-turn, you know, come back.
Well, is, let me ask you this, is both of the proposals user-friendly to horses?
Yeah, we use police to get through those intersections, so it's not a problem.
Lord of feeling.
The main intersection and the U-turn and bowl intersections will be designed for a 6 to 7-foot tractor trailer.
Yeah.
Unless you start using tractor-trailers.
Yes, I do. I'm sure that Chris brought this, Chris brought this today, I'm sure. And one other thing, we are using the standard super street on all other intersections that have been brought to this table.
Every other, every other intersection on 74 that's being designed as a super street is using the standard intersections. We got four locations in Indian Trail, so we've got one other one in Monroe, Secrets Avenue, old page in Monroe.
Does this go back? Backwards?
Can we go backwards?
Yeah. To the, to the two concepts.
What's the timeline on this? Long way out?
No, we are planning to let this project next spring.
Next spring.
So, again, this is basically what we're doing in other intersections on 74.
Yeah.
Your economic development folks have told us, hey, we've got the airport down here, we're building the Monroe bypass up here, we want a Michigan left, we want an open intersection that you can put tractor-trailers across to get to the Monroe bypass.
It's a touch.
Well, well, is, let me ask you this, is both of the proposals, uh, user-friendly to purses?
Yeah, we use police to get through those intersections, so it's not a problem.
No.
Go to fill it.
The main intersection and the U-turn and bowl intersections will be designed for a, a, a six to seven foot tractor trailer. So anything small.
You're covered, Freddie.
Yeah.
Unless you start using tractor trailers.
Yes, I do. I'm sure that Chris brought this, Chris brought this today, I'm sure, uh, and, and one other thing, we are using the standard super street on all other intersections that have been brought to this table.
Every other, every other intersection on seventy-four that's being designed as a super street is using the standard intersection. We got four locations in Indian Trail, so we've got one other one in Monroe, um, Seacrest Avenue, Old Bay, in Monroe.
Does this go back? Backwards?
Do you want to go backwards?
Yeah.
What's the timeline of this? Long way out?
No, we are planning to let this project next spring.
Next spring.
So, again, this is basically what we're doing in other intersections on seventy-four.
Yeah.
Your economic development folks have told us, hey, we've got the airport down here, we're building the Monroe bypass up here. We want a Michigan left, we want an open intersection that you can put tractor trailers across to get to the Monroe bypass.
It's a touch.
We, we heard that, but we wanted to do an analysis to make sure it's gonna work. We did that, it is gonna work. Um, at the same time, we know how well this works, and as far as progression on seventy-four, this provides us with additional, uh, flexibility and capability on seventy-four, okay? If, if, if the town of Monroe, the city of Monroe said, hey, we're fine with you implementing that, that's what we would go forward with. But if you tell us that, no, we would like the Michigan left intersection, that's what we'll go forward with. So that's kind of where we are.
Well, we appreciate you having us.
Yeah.
Rocky River and Monroe bypass, that's the quickest, easiest way to get on the Monroe bypass, is that, Chris?
From right here.
It's all done from our business park.
From the business park and airport.
And we need to keep that in mind, whatever we do there, I mean, I want, we wanna get the right design, but at the same time, we don't wanna hurt ourselves at the business park.
Yeah, yeah.
Chris, you guys, any thing you wanna add to that? I mean, put you on the spot, but I'd be glad, I'd, I'd like to hear from the economic development man, I'm sure.
And again, we appreciate the long-term relationship with Scott, with John Underwood, for Sean. They've been very, very good to work with us on a lot of these. We had a great community meeting regarding the super street in front of Tyson and Seacrest and seventy-four, and came up with very good resolution, I think, you know, had a lot of information passed, so everybody was comfortable there. Um, I appreciate the consideration, we had the meeting a while back, talked about the Michigan left, appreciate y'all going back and considering that, that's true. Um, that means a lot, because again, we're trying to, you know, Monroe's invested a lot, you know, tens of millions of dollars in the airport area and the corporate center and all of that. While both function, I think, from a perception standpoint, companies coming in are gonna look at, without driving through it, see what's better for my company. And I think the straight through is visually more pleasing to somebody that's got tractor trailer trucks thinking about getting to the bypass, and so that's why we're wanting to push that. As well as, I think culturally, um, the super streets can create a divider, so that you have the north side of town and the south side of town, because people aren't gonna necessarily go through it as much. And so, from a cultural standpoint too, to keep Monroe more cohesive on the western side, I think a Michigan left would be more beneficial in that standpoint. But I, again, I really appreciate y'all looking at that, and again, from our standpoint exactly, Scott had said, the Michigan left.
I would, I would agree with the truck, with the, anyone has a straight shot to the bypass.
Right.
Coming from them.
Yeah.
So I hate to, waited forty years and not be able to get to it.
Yeah, have to turn right, go down, turn back, lay a turn back right.
And out of curiosity now, uh, other than just the intersection, uh, so, and, and you're using the year twenty forty on here, I'm, I'm just curious, I'm just, any plans or not? To twenty forty, let's just say, do you intend really to make any other improvements on Rocky River as far as widening or?
I thought you were gonna say, I thought you were gonna say US seventy-four.
No, hey, listen, I, I throw that out. Rocky River's, you know, I mean, that is our bypass, let's stop and think about it. I mean, you're going from south of two hundred to six oh one or two hundred door. I mean, you know, Rocky River is the feeder for all of that, it's true. I'm just curious if there's any...
We have a, a safety project at seventy-five on Rocky River.
Right.
That's a roundabout at that location. But other than that, major capacity improvements, no, I'm not aware of any, Jim, or have any been submitted into SDI? So I'm, I'm not aware of any major capacity improvements, but there's, there is, there is more capacity there than, that's basically untapped, because the road can carry more if we make the intersections more efficient and carry more. And that's basically what this kind of designed up.
Yeah.
And so, um, we're, we're working on those problem areas and trying to address those, kind of what I was about to ask.
Mayor.
Mayor.
I wanna make a motion that, that, uh, we asked the gentleman in favor that are the council to approve going with the Michigan left. I think it would be extremely beneficial to, to our airport.
I think that'd be beneficial for our, for our corporate center. Not only for the truck, but everybody else got a straight shot if they come another way, instead of having to go all the way turn.
Most people in Hamilton Place appreciate the Michigan left.
Do what?
Those houses in development, what, over there, going straight, I think they appreciate it.
Oh, yeah, I agree, I was talking about, not only the truck, but everybody goes straight to the bypass if they wanna do the bypass. I have a motion, Glenn, have a second? Have a motion second, all in favor? Okay, any opposed? Here it does look like a submission could live, Bill.
Thank you.
Thank y'all for your presentation very much.
Appreciate that, David. If you got any extra money you wanna spend, if we can have that.
If you'll indulge me for just a second.
Yeah.
I know, we don't have extra money, but we are spending some money in the account. I wanna kind of highlight those other projects.
Thank you.
Um, we, we do have a Monroe bypass under construction.
Right.
And it is scheduled for completion in late twenty eighteen. Um, and we are moving on that project, if you've ever, if you've been out there on the corridor, it is really happening.
Yes.
It sure is. Um, in addition to that, uh, these super streets, inner, super street intersections are coming to seventy-four. Uh, and so we are working on intersection improvements, we had some, had some safety money approved, and we're acquiring right away now on three intersections, they all happen to be inside the corporate limits of...
The four intersections?
I'm sorry, all inside the corporate limits of Indian Trail. And we'll be constructing that next, um, next year, probably, uh, the entire, um, construction season. But we, we hope to get it, get it all built in one year. Okay, we talked about the Rocky River intersection improvement, I've got twenty eighteen there, but we've advanced that, so, uh, we expect to complete that next year. Uh, and the, the US six oh one interchange, we've done some analysis there, I think we came to your transportation committee with some, um, alternatives there for some roundabouts, that, the, the interchange termini and six oh one. So we've got that, those improvements there. Uh, and we also have a project to widen seventy-four from where the six-lane section ends there at Hanover, uh, up to Rocky River Road. So this will, that will kind of tie in, that end of the project will tie into the Rocky River Road intersection that we're building with this project.
I bet there's roundabouts that save a lot of wrecks there.
They have, they're, they're very efficient and moving traffic, keep people moving. Uh, and like Sean said about the super streets, they reduce the, the number of collisions, and they greatly reduce the severity of collisions, because people are going fifteen to twenty miles an hour max through the intersection. Don't have those high-speed T-bone crashes. Uh, they're mostly sides, wipes and angle, you know, off-angle crashes that are very minor in nature when you do that. So that's what we've got coming to seventy-four in the county.
Well, we appreciate that, and any issue that you guys get that could improve some of our streets, uh, we, we appreciate those.
We're both residents of Union Counties, we'll keep that in mind.
Right.
It's very good pass, so it's budget.
Just don't want, won't you forget it.
Now, if you saw that, I'd like that, I'd like to throw in another, uh, scenario. Down at five points, gotten a sense that we redesigned those streets in there. We had a lot of complaints, and I know, you know, traffic backs up on going east, going east out of Franklin Street, that five. Traffic will back way up to the right lane because nobody wants to go left. And very few cars, to none, go left because it don't go anywhere. What they're doing, they're pulling up right in front of everybody, and they're cutting off front to get in the right lane and continue east on Franklin Street. So all the traffic is backed up by all the time, and I think folks in here may, may know what I'm talking about. The left lane don't have any except the cars won't exceed the speed limit to outrun the front gap at the stoplight. I don't know why we have had a lot of wrecks there.
Okay, and that's like in the afternoon, peak hour?
Yeah, peak hour, I, I'm not sure of just peak hour, but I know that, yes, at peak hour, very few cars go to the left, very few.
Right. Well, we had, what we had when there was a crash problem at Morgan Mill, when the car that turned out, you know, so that's what we tried to mitigate. We can look at what's going on there and talk to your police.
Well, a lot of people are doing too.
What we can do.
A lot of people still don't know it, they go left, they go out the road, and when they get up there, they can't go anywhere. So they turn back right and go to stoplight, instead of going somewhere, turn around, and make a U-turn, they're in Franklin Street, go back out the road. I mean, I, I don't know what the answer is, but...
It's called a kill board left.
Yeah, well, that's something, but it's, it's, I don't know why they have more wrecks at Franklin Street than we have wrecks, because they were really shooting down in front of the cars down there. And it, and a lot of them is running the red light, not the first light. See, when you make that first light, they go second light, second red light. And they'll shoot in front of that first car to get in front of them. If that light's red or whatever, they go, because they can't slow their speed down, because the, the back car's gonna help them. I've had a lot of complaints on that.
Okay, well, we can observe it and, uh, talk, talk to your, uh, your police about it, see what we can do.
Thank you very much, thank y'all for coming, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, item two, in twenty minutes or six, we can get started on this. Do you wanna start this and finish it in the council chamber, or how, how the council wanna do this?
Start it and finish it.
Start it and finish it in council, because we're gonna have to knock off here like five minutes or six, or seven, or eight minutes or six, whatever you wanna do. So we're gonna start item one, discussion of the code.
Well, thank you, Mayor. And request the council for additional informations on actions in historic district. I've asked police this time, whether to provide an overview of, of our actions since May third, uh, and on insights for, uh, some of the ordinances that are our main tools to address minimum housing and historic preservation, also some insights on the conversations we've had with, uh, several interested citizens that appeared on, uh, May third, as you may recall. And they spoke of violations in the neighborhood, particularly historic district, in which they referred to the need for minimum, maximum ordinance provisions. And, uh, as a follow-up to those comments, the staff met with the citizens to clarify terms and practices and ordinances. Now, so this evening's session, this topic, at least we'll provide an overview. And we welcome your direction on areas you'd like to see applied and defend.
Hey, Mayor. Why don't we just put this off to six o'clock, and then let it be first?
I think it's gonna get started, and we're gonna have to stop.
Well, that's why I asked that question, but, uh, five, maybe let's see what the council wants to do. Is that okay with the council? Do it at six o'clock when y'all are ready?
Yes.
Well, it might be good for other people here as well, out there, all being in attendance.
All right, well, let's do it at six o'clock.
Well, that's what I was saying, I'd like to see the people here, is it okay with the council? Okay, uh, please, let's get on my, we'll wait until next clock. Title motion to adjourn, second, all in favor?
Uh, we adjourn for second clock.